How is everybody today?
Great.
Great.
Hello.
Fine.
It looks like we're all.
Get the flag up, Robin. Sorry.
Okay, well, that's right. I guess then we'll forego the pledge to the flag. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't go ahead and start? We'll just forego the pledge to the flag. It's 5:30 on my computer, which keeps better time than my watch does. So let's go ahead and get started with the public hearing on the annual town meeting warrant. And Matt, do you want to just talk briefly about that or? Oh.
Do you see the flag now?
I do.
So let's do, let's do the flag of the pledge.
All right, let's go ahead and say the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag, United States of America.
To the Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, limited, justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I know that does not work well. But appreciate your patience in doing that. In the meeting of the public hearing on the annual town meeting warrant. This, I think, the last came for anyone to ask any questions about the budget in advance of the election in June. So is there anyone here that has any comments or questions about the annual town warrant? And I guess if I could ask you everyone to mute your sound if you're not speaking, there's an awful lot of feedback going on. Thank you. So no, no comments, no questions about the annual town warrant?
Robin, I can, I can just comment that the articles one through 26 will be voted on the referendum ballot on June 8th as requested by the board. This will give everyone an opportunity, all voters, an opportunity to vote either in person or by absentee ballot. And then the remaining articles, which are less substantive, 27 through through 42 would be voted on at the open town meeting on June 9th. So, and they, of course, some the more important parts of the budget that will be voted on at secret ballot is the, is the budget itself. So, I mean, the, one of the more important parts of the warrant is the budget. But we're seeing. You know, I'm getting feedback here, but we are looking at a two point, I think, seven percent increase in the town budget, which is, is fairly modest when you think of what we're putting into our capital improvements this year. And then we, we do have the ordinance on, on the secret ballot elections, we, as all, and also we have the amendments to the historic preservation ordinance and a charter amendment that allows for a historic preservation review commission. I'd say those are the most important items that are on the, the warrant for this year.
And I would encourage everyone to please go online and read the proposed ordinances, the charter amendment and the detailed budget. It's there for all to see. And the other thing is we have that really nifty voting box outside the town office. So you can drop your ballots in there if you don't want to come in and, you know, vote. Okay, if there are any comment, any further comments about the warrant, let's move on to Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda will be the approval of minutes. We have minutes to approve. One is the March 17th Board of Selectmen's Budget Review Number Two Meeting. And I'll make a motion that those minutes be approved.
I'll second it.
Any comments? All in favor? Okay. And the second minutes are the April 7th meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll, I'll move the April 7th minutes.
Okay, any comments? All in favor? What are you laughing at, Josh?
Josh and I are speaking at the same time.
Oh, okay. Our financial reports, the first is, I, I think we could do the two payroll warrants together, number 57 and 58. I make a motion that we approve those.
I'll second it.
Comments? All in favor? Hey. Count payable warrant, number 59 is for Hager Enterprises' snow park contract.
I'll move AP 59, Robin.
Okay.
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, thank you. And AP warrant number 60?
I'll move AP 60.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, I will remind you that there are a lot of things, documents like these that we just approved up at town office that we need to go and sign. So, you know, tomorrow, the office is closed on Friday or the beginning of next week, so we can get caught up. And, you know, I'm, I'm one of the staff laws, so he's gonna have to see me tomorrow to sign those papers. So, let's help him out.
Thank you for the reminder.
Thank, thank Matt. He reminded me today. So, this evening, we have two presentations.
No, I was just gonna say Lou's pretty well caught up on signatures, just has to do the ones from this evening.
Okay, good, good. Well, let's all follow Lou's lead and get up there and sign. Tonight, we have several presentations from Larry. The first, Larry Seidlinger, the first is the Lincoln County Television Plan for Live Streaming, the Board of Selectmen's and Planning Board's meeting, which is kind of exciting. So I'm gonna turn it over to Larry if I could.
I'm muting there. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Robin. Matt and I spoke late, earlier this week, and I understand that the selectmen in the town, the, the political meetings that Damascotta wants, that holds several times a month, would like to have them livestreamed, which we can do. We have the capabilities. They will be livestreamed to our YouTube page, so somebody can just go to our webpage and then we'll see a link for that to click onto, and they can watch all of you lovely faces, all of your lovely faces in livestream. And the only thing you need to have is somebody manning a computer. So if somebody wants to ask a question, they can just email it. We can put that email link right on the screen, so somebody can email it, the question, and whoever your lender or whoever can receive that question and ask the the Board of Selectmen. We do this for the Pumpkin Fest, and I've had great success with it. It's clear, it's concise. People are pretty good about asking questions. Whoever the secretary or whoever's manning the computer can take the questions and read them off to the select people and, and I don't know why it wouldn't work just as well for you folks. If you people are gonna do a hybrid meeting, I understand you're gonna be back in the town office, the 3rd of May, I think, is the date, Matt. I'm not sure.
It's May 3rd for the planning board and May 5th for the Board of Selectmen.
So, we can do that May 3rd, and you can all watch and see how you like it and and go from there. You want to try it. The only question we have is whether the, if you have enough, if your bandwidth, you have spectrum for cable at the station. I've gotta send my tech guy down and do a upload speed and see what, I think it's gonna be enough. Jeff and I talked about it yesterday, and I think it's gonna be okay. Hopefully, you're gonna have a good internet in there soon, so we shall see. That, that's not a real big issue. We can, we can do that. We have a fair amount of experience now with this live streaming after the basketball games and and cheerleading stuff that we've done and, and the Pumpkin Fest, so I feel pretty confident we can give you a pretty good product there.
And I asked, yeah, but I, I have a quick one. For people that might be watching that are in the hinterlands of Damascotta, will, will it affect them, like sometimes the Zoom meetings do, if they don't have good connectivity?
And? I would, if they have a, if they have good, if they have any kind of internet at all, even if they have mediocre internet, it's a download for them. They're not uploading it. So they should, if they can get, if they can get YouTube video on their computers at home, they shouldn't have any problem at all.
Okay, good, all right.
The, 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 the big question mark, if there is a question mark, is how good your spectrum cable is at the town office. That's what, that's the, the bearing. Now, if you want to do a meeting, the Zoom meeting, or if you want to do your meetings, and say the YMCA or the school, they have great internet there. We have absolutely no question. We'll, we'll put them out there, finest kind, but if there's any question, it will be how good your internet link is at the town office.
Okay.
If, if Jeff comes over and finds that the, the system is not adequate here under spectrum. And you'll see that I freeze up quite a bit when I'm talking, because I'm on the, the town's cable line right now. If, if Jeff finds, Jeff see, one of Larry's folks at, at LCTV, if he finds that our system is not adequate, would the board mind moving temporarily to the Y? I, or he's available? So we get a better connection?
Yeah, that would be fine with me.
Fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I think it'll be, you know, a lot more efficient, I think, than the Zoom meetings.
You will have clarity and you will not, you, you won't have dropped signal. People will get a good clear picture. They'll get good sound. It'll be just like watching TV. You know, they'll watch on their computers, but it'll be just like watching TV. The only flip side, I guess the downside is, they can't, like I'm talking to you folks right now, they can't talk to you guys, but they can type their questions in and they'll go back and forth.
Yeah, you won't, you won't know who's in the meeting, right?
That's correct.
Unless they, unless they type something in, yeah.
That's, that's correct, Matt. You won't know who you're talking to unless they identify themselves, and that's a parameter you can put on your email. You know, if you want a question asked, you have to identify yourself.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important, we do know who's asking the question.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, when, a lot of times, you know, when we have meetings and hearings, we do ask people to identify themselves, name, you know, town they live in or whatever. So I, I don't see it's a problem that we would just not continue to do that. You know, particularly since we can't see them. So, well, that's exciting.
Yeah, sounds good. Give it a try.
We'll, we'll put it together for, that, I think that's a six o'clock.
Has a question. I see his hand up.
Yeah, Haas has a question for Larry. Go ahead, Haas.
As someone who attends these meetings by Zoom, I feel, I'm able to ask this question immediately in real time when the Zoom meeting. My sense is that wouldn't be true via the television. The television, and from the way I heard Larry describe it, there's somebody, middleman in between who's posting your questions. And that does not feel like direct citizen contact with a selectman, which is what I like to have. I'm just stating that. This is not a substitute, I guess I would put it this way. This is not an adequate substitute for Zoom.
Someone want to respond? Or comment? Either Matt, Larry, or the selectman?
Well, I mean, I've watched some of your Zoom meetings, and you've had your share of difficulties trying to get your signal. And, and part of the problem is you have such terrible internet there at the town office. If you had decent internet, you probably could go back to, you know, if you had a, if you had a fiber optic with a hundred up and a hundred down, which you can get, we have that here at, at the TV studio, you would have absolutely, probably very little problem with your Zoom meetings. But as it is right now, I mean, I've watched you guys for 10, 15 minutes now, and Robin's dropped out two or three times.
Yeah.
Just what I've seen.
That's interesting, because I, I never have anyone drop out. Of course, I'm on fiber, fiber optics right here in town, so what's the cost differential for the town to go to what Larry's suggesting?
It's, it's included in our franchise agreement with both companies. So I've already talked to Randall Manning, the Vice President, about having it.
So it's not a cost issue, then?
No, but I don't believe so. Can I make a comment, please? So, I do the planning board meetings, and I, I'm the host, and I host from a Lewis and office, so we don't ever have any problems with Zoom connections or breaking up of the of the pictures. The planning board, however, at the last meeting, they expressed strong, strong preference to go to a a live meeting. They feel that the Zoom meetings just don't provide enough input on a, on, on a formal basis. The, the Luac meetings are more informal. The, the planning board meetings, especially public hearings, are formal. The problem is, we are in a, in a gray zone right now, because the best we could do is a hybrid meeting, which would be the planning board meeting together and then having the public participate by Zoom. And that is very difficult situation to, to try to either set up or administer. So I think this is a short-term problem that we'll get over in the next few months. So I think the, the LCTV is, is not a great answer, but it's, it's a better answer than trying to do a hybrid Zoom meeting or just do Zoom alone. And going forward, after the pandemic issues are over, you know, when people feel free and they're allowed to, to attend the board meetings, we could, attending the board meetings, but people still could continue, if we have the LCTV hookup, others could participate remotely. So we could do a combination there, which I think will, will be really good in, in terms of not only will be, people be able to watch the meetings live, you know, now they, they can watch them later in the week, or they could watch them on LCTV after the fact. But not only can they watch them live, but they could participate in the meeting remotely, which I think would be pretty cool when we get, when we get back to normal. But as, as far as, you know, having people's faces and being able to communicate verbally via writ, as opposed to written message, you know, Zoom is probably the best way to go for now, if, if that's what the board would like, because we, we wouldn't have that capability on YouTube.
Okay, Doug has a question or comment? Doug Morton? Are you muted?
Doug, you're muted.
Unmuted.
My only comment is that I really appreciate this ability to come in anytime like this take part from afar, rather than having to drive into town and sit somewhere. And whether it be Zoom or Facebook, I'm not sure. Is that significant? I think they both have their pluses and minuses. Facebook makes you think a little harder before you start spewing off, like me. And Zoom gives you the ability to see who's actually posting the question, posing the question. But I would assume that if you get into some very heated topical issues, Zoom might become quite ineffective due to everybody wanting to have their say, as compared to Facebook where it comes in and someone has the time to analyze the questions and do away with duplicates and that type thing.
Okay.
Robin, I want to clarify, we're going to YouTube Live. We're not doing Facebook unless you guys want it. We've found that Facebook doesn't have the bandwidth or doesn't hold up the quality signal as well as YouTube does. We've had much, much better luck with the YouTube Live feed than we have with Facebook.
A lot of people aren't on Facebook. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Facebook.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, if you just, if they go to our lctv.org webpage, they'll find link right there. Click on it, and it will take you right to the
The meeting.
The show.
Yeah. Yeah, I've participated in those kinds of meetings, Haas, not as somebody on the screen or in the meeting room, but sending in questions and what have you, and it, and it works okay. And these are meetings attended by several hundreds of people, and it's not like 75 people will send a question in all at once. So I, I think for the size of our town and kind of the normal numbers of people that show up for public hearings, I think it might be worth a shot and see how it goes. And if we do it for the month of May and then come back and reassess.
Did Randall give you any idea, Matt?
No, he just said discuss it. Now, he's gonna be making a presentation to the board on May 19th, but I'm, I'm hoping that I can, I can get something nailed down before then.
Josh, Daryl, Lou?
Well, Josh.
I, I guess what I'd like to do right now is, is instruct Matt to talk to Randall and get this thing going. And not wait till he comes in and let's get this taken care of, because this has been an issue. We all have been having lots of meetings, and I'm sure they're gonna continue. So if we can just get it done, then it'll be over with.
Hey, other comments from the board?
I'm sorry, Josh was breaking up a little bit, at least on my screen. But Josh, were you, were you thinking that we go ahead with the LCTV?
Yeah, I, I think we go with Larry, and then we need to contact Randall and just get him to hook this thing up and just be done with it.
Yeah. Other comments from the board?
No, I was, you know, I was gonna echo, you know, Josh or Rob, and I think we, you know, give it a try and, and move ahead with it and, and see what the, you know, the, the citizen input is on it, if it works. Larry, a quick question for you on the YouTube, and pardon my lack of expertise, or, but I know that we, with people asking questions, sometimes I watch them on YouTube and there's a, there's a live feed or a live chat feature. I don't know the difference.
Yeah, that's, that's what you need somebody manning the computer for, is to answer those questions. Or to pass, actually not to answer the questions, but to pass the questions on to the board.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we've done with the Pumpkin Fest, and we've had as many as, I think, 35 or 40 people watching our meetings. And it's, we've had somebody manning Claire, some of his, is one of the directors of the, of the Pumpkin Fest, and she's manned the computer. It works, it works really slick. You know, I'm looking at a dozen or so people here for this night meeting. I mean, I think if you advertise, you may actually find more people will tune in to, to watch these shows and watch what you're doing. I, I don't know, but.
Yeah. Worth giving it, yeah. It's worth giving it, giving it a shot and see how it, you know, see how.
Not gonna cost you anything to try it.
Yeah. I, I, I think, go back to what Bob Fossett earlier, I think we're all, we've all invented that effectiveness, you lose some of the effectiveness of the board not being in person. There's some, you know, there, there's some lacking. There's probably some cause to both of it. So we've given this a go for a long time. Let's try something else for, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, Matt, if you can get everything set up and ready to roll, and we'll have the planning board meeting on like, May 3rd.
And. Six. We need about a half hour in this, in, in to set up beforehand, 20 minutes to a half an hour to set up. That's.
On the, on the planning board meeting, that's one area where we're gonna find out if we, we have enough bandwidth, because we'll
We'll know before then, Matt.
Okay, yeah, we, we're gonna try to do it, we have to do it Zoom, because the, the public hearing notices have already gone out with the Zoom link. But then we're, we're also want to know, you know, whether we can do it LCTV. So if we can do, you know, it's kind of a, a, a three-way with, with it live for the planning board and then Zoom and then LCTV. So we'll, we'll sort it out. I mean, I'll be at the meeting too, so I'll be at.
Oh, you're gonna do the Zoom on May 3rd?
Yeah.
You are gonna do Zoom as well, okay?
Have to be advertised. It's been advertised via Zoom.
Okay.
So the.
Yeah.
The people participating by Zoom, will you have them up on the wall? Or are you just gonna have the little computer?
No, I'll do it, I'll do it like I did for the last Board of Selectmen meetings that we, where we did the hybrid. I'll, I'll, I'll project the, the people that are attending onto the wall.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I think if you're, if you're Zooming, it's important for the reporting that people can see more than, you know, just what's going on in the room and little teeny tiny thumbnails. It's nice to, as a group.
Matt, do I understand this right? So you're gonna do a Zoom as well as the live feed, and now you're gonna do it from the town office? Or if we do a test and we find your signal is really, really low, will you move it to and do both at the YMCA?
If, if we can.
Do that if we put up a sign.
Let's do it.
Okay.
And send out adequate notice, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna do it Zoom, it doesn't, the only people are gonna be affected, really, are the people on the board that have to go to the Y rather than the town office.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, Matt, if you can work your magic to get it all done, and I guess including, you know, if it town office to coordinate folks at the Y, just we can use some of their space if it's available.
No. And I'll do my best.
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Or, yep.
Okay. All right. Larry, you move on from LCTV to Pumpkin Fest? You referenced your Pumpkin Fest meeting, so what's going on?
Turn my hat around. You folks may have heard, we've thrown a party in Damascotta now for the last 13 or 14 years. We took a year off last year. On Columbus Day weekend, we call it the Pumpkin Fest. And the last one we had, which was two years ago, we had a lot of success, had a lot of fun, we had a lot of people. Our plan right now this year is to go forward like a normal Pumpkin Fest with the idea that we will see what the CDC says and the Dr. Scharr and all these people. And if we have to start pulling things back, i.e. a parade or a pumpkin drop or whatever, we will do that. We can, but we're gonna go forward because of the timing. It's easier to pull something away than it is try to put it together in, in a short period of time. So as far as the questions on a Pumpkin Fest, as I speak right now, we are full steam ahead. We still have some logistics to work out about where we're going to do a pumpkin drop and pumpkin hunt, because the DRA is not available, and we did check with a couple of other locations. And they didn't pan out for us. We have one more that we're waiting to confirm whether that one's available or not. So we still have some balls in the air or pumpkins in the air, so to speak. As far as the traffic, we tried the one in the back parking lot with mixed results. It had a, a big positive impact as far as getting traffic on Main Street moving and keeping it moving. The barricades, I have not yet heard one negative comment about those. The chief of police was. The chief of police was ecstatic. Jason was really happy with them. The, the flaggers that we had doing the crosswalks seemed to work pretty well. The back parking lot did not, did not offer the flexibility that I thought it would. There was just too much traffic down there, people looking for, for parking pace, parking spaces. And our fear has always been pedestrians and traffic don't mix too good. So we've talked about maybe using Water Street where we used to do the bounce houses for loading and unloading zone where we can control, there will be no traffic and we can just pull buses in there and they can go back out on the Main Street and, and continue with flaggers controlling traffic in and out. So that is the plan right now to be a Pumpkin Fest, just like it's always been with the regatta and a drop and a parade and pumpkins on Main Street. But I want to caution everybody that we are a lot of balls in the air and going with whatever this COVID does to us. And if worst case scenario, maybe all we'll have is pumpkins on Main Street with barricades to, to keep people from walking out into the street or backing out into the street or whatever. So that there is still plenty of social distancing on Main Street to get people back in for often. Because I expect even if it's just pumpkins, there'll be a crowd.
Yeah, yeah.
Larry, would you, would you introduce Claire?
Yeah.
Claire, she is the, one of the directors. She's the administrator, one of the administrators for the Pumpkin Fest. Hi, Claire. Claire is the girl that does everything to help us keep going.
No, no, no. And I'm not a director. I am not a director. I am merely.
Administrator. She's the administrator.
Merely the co-admin chair.
Trust me, she helps with everything. She keeps all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. As well as now she's my right-hand gal here at LCTV. So I am doubly blessed, doubly blessed, believe me. And, and the Jeff we talked about for the tech guy is her significant other. So they are the Dynamo team. They're great. So that's what we're doing. Any questions? I'm all ears.
Not for me.
Oh, I.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, it, it would be nice to get back to this, to get, you know, some of this COVID behind us and get back to normal things. And for Larry to come and have all these things lined up and, and Claire to go ahead. And with the idea that they can pull this back if they have to. So I think it's a great thing for the town of Damascotta, you know, and I appreciate all the work that they put into it.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you. Look forward to it being back.
It's a, it's a team effort. It's a, it's a huge team effort. Everybody, it's a lot of work. We all feel strongly that it's a huge economic driver for the town and the community, not just our town, but the community, Lincoln County and the coastal, mid-coast Maine. It goes from Bath to Rockland. I know people are saying the clam festival is canceled and lobster festival is canceled. We're a different kind of a festival. We're not trying to feed people. You know, we're trying to just have, let, have some fun, let people look at pumpkins. And if there's vendors, there's vendors, but we're not doing, you know, the lobsters and the clams and the, and the, and all that. So we're really a lot different kind of a festival than, than those two are. So, you know, and, and we're, we're going to do the pumpkin, the deployment on Thursday afternoon. I've talked with Chief Wallach about that. He's, you know, we'll, we'll manage the safety just hopefully as good as we've always done. And we're always looking for improvement, you know, and the barricades will go up Saturday morning, hopefully. And they'll come down hopefully Tuesday morning, bright and early. So.
The oil machine.
Good, good.
We squeak a little bit from time to time.
Yeah.
Well, it's nice that it's coming back. You know, I, I echo what Mark said. I, I think that it really is a boost, not just for the economy, but for people's spirits, you know, it's just a happy time in town. So it's really nice. So.
It's, it's a community, it's a community festival. It's a community economic driver. You know, a lot of people come and spend a lot of money, a lot of time, and it's just plain old good stupid fun. It's just a lot of good fun. And after what we've been through the last year, year and a half, by that time, I think everybody's ready for a little bit of fun.
Need it. Absolutely.
And hopefully, hopefully we've got this thing under control in the next six months, a little better than we've had it in the last six, so.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, any questions? Any further questions for Barry or Claire on Pumpkin Fest?
And I did want to, one more thing I wanted to mention is I would like to thank the town for the support that they give us. Hugh Plebe, Plebe, I think that's his last name, the, the town highway guy there, huge help that weekend. And Chief Jason Wallach, their, their support has been tremendous. So thanks to the town for, you know, digging in and, and helping us put this thing together. It's a, it's that, that is a huge plus being able to work with those guys. They're just so agreeable and they're right there at the snap of the fingers, anything you need. So my, my thanks to those guys because I have to work closely with both of them and, and it's, it's a pleasure.
Good. That was good to hear. Good team effort.
It is a team effort. It is.
So, okay. Well, thank you so much. If there aren't any further questions, Larry, Claire, you're more than welcome to stay with us for the rest of the selectmen's meeting.
Jeez, I think my supper is ready.
You gotta get riveted.
And you never keep a woman waiting when the supper's on the table if you can help it.
Okay, well, thank you both for being here this evening and I'm sure we'll be seeing both of you again.
Thanks, guys. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow, Claire.
Okay, next on the agenda, citizens' comments, general correspondence? Anything?
I don't, I didn't receive. Nope.
Okay.
Unless Haas or Doug have something.
Nothing from me.
Okay, town manager's items. The first, the update, Matt will give us an update on the conversion of the street light LED fixtures. And I don't know if you guys have noticed them. I walk my dogs at night and I think they're great. I love them. So with that, go ahead, Matt. Let's, let's hear about the streetlight conversion.
You know, I was told last week that I, my connection doesn't break up as my go-off. So if you don't mind, I'm going to try that.
Okay.
And I'm not. I'm trying, I can't, I'm trying to get to my, here we go. Isn't that? I don't seem to be able to do that. Let's see.
We lost two people at least from the meeting and so maybe that will make it better. The fewer people on the call, the, the, the less likely you are to break up.
Maybe that, that'll work better. Okay. All right. So. All right, just, I have a few extra items more than what I, what I have listed. So yeah, I think the, the LED conversion went great. I went ahead and ordered the lights for the parking lot. You know, we had held off on doing that because we thought we might be replacing the light fixtures with the, with the reconstruction of the parking lot. I, I don't see that happening, at least not in the very near future. And I would like to have those new light fixtures in time for the Fourth of July celebration so that we can, you know, show off the new feature. We can shut down the, the bright lights when the fireworks are about to go off and then turn them right back on when, you know, the crowd leaves so they can leave safely. And speaking of that new feature, there are several of us in the office, including the, the, the front office staff, myself and Chief Warlick, that are going to get. Mark, if calls in and says the light's too bright, we'll be able to, to, to turn that light down right from here. So I've already had one, one caller. One citizen asked for that. I may have shared this with you already. He said he pulled this neighbor's and the light's too bright. And I don't, I don't have the controls here, but I was able to call Real Terms and say, can you turn this down for me? That, that day they turned it down and that evening it was down, it had been turned down 50%. The citizen contacted me the next day and said the neighborhood is thrilled with it. So we'll, we'll have that capability and, and once we have that capability in-house, I'll advertise, we do have the ability to, to adjust the lights from Town Hall. I'm just going to buzz right through. If there's any questions, waterfront improvements. I think if you've been downtown, you've seen that the, the brickwork is going up on the restroom. From what I understand, Chase will be back in town next week to convert. So, you know, if all goes well, we'll get that done by the end of April and have all the, the sewer line work cleared out by the time we get, well before we get visitors coming in for, for Memorial Day weekend. I, we did get, thanks to Max, who's on the call here, we did get the pre-app in for the voters' fund grant. We got that in on time. I got word today that the pre-app was approved. And the staff from the vote, voters' fund will be calling me next week to set up an appointment for an onsite visit. So let's keep our fingers crossed on that. And again, thanks to Max for his work on that, that. And just a few items about my activities. I, I did an, an update on the, the towns, mostly on our capital improvements, on the community conversations with yesterday. So that'll be aired in the new future. Hopefully you like the way that that came out. Just a fantastic host. So it's, 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 it's kind of fun to do that. I'm participating in a panel for an Island Institute remote conference that they're having for the, what they call the ILEED program. That's coming up next week. That, that again is coming out to do an update on our waterfront project. So that's kind of cool. We'll get some, some video coverage on that. Let's see, I had, oh, yeah, Randall Manning, I mentioned this earlier, from Tidewater. Just going to turn on our, to the fiber and the broadband in, in Damascotta. Have him live. He'll have one of his associates with him, Alan Pinsley. And both of them will have had their, their, their vaccines in the, the two weeks since their last vaccine. I just think it goes so much better when, when we're live. So if, even if we have to have it here in the, in the boardroom, we have enough space, given the 75% capacity rule that's now in place or will be in place May 1st. So if that's okay with the board, I'll, I'll tell him to, to come in person rather than, than live.
Absolutely.
And then, then finally, I need, I need to have a special Board of Selectmen's meeting. I sent you a note on that earlier here today, just the way that, the way, the way that the, the logistics are working this year. The secondary schools budget has not been approved yet. And and it won't be approved till at least Friday. So the only way you can approve the warrant for that meeting is to do it after Friday and it'll have to be signed shortly. We have, now Robin's going to be out of town. She has a business trip next week. So I'm wondering if next Wednesday would work for the rest of you, Wednesday afternoon, perhaps.
Yeah.
You could even be available. Come into that just to sign the warrant or, or we could just have a quick live meeting.
What time?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Anytime in the afternoon. We've got our, our real term LED light training in the morning. So if we could make it in the afternoon, anytime after 1:00, that would.
The. Usually the later.
We do it in the evening.
Late, later the better for me, but I don't know what the rest of us, yeah.
I need, I need three of you basically. Not that we don't want all of you here, but the minimum would be three.
Can we do it at four?
A pardon?
Can we do, can we do it at four?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't, for a little league practice from 4:00 to 5:30.
Four would be better for, for and after would be better for me. It's, it's, we have a special commitment on Wednesdays with a friend that is Parkinson's.
If, if four will work for, or three of two don't mind, could we schedule it at that time?
I, I, yeah, I could do four if you just get the three of us. Yeah.
Josh, what are, what are your thoughts?
Just, I had practice at from 4:00 to 5:30, but if I need to get out of there real quick for a few minutes, I can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you the warrant as soon as I receive it. And we're looking at, you know, we're looking at a significant reduction in the secondary schools budget. As I said before, you know, I don't know if it's changed since they sent it to me on March 15th, but it's a reduction of 319,017.2%. So I don't think it's going to be very controversial.
No.
So I'll send that to you ahead of time, but let's, if that's okay with you, Josh, 4 o'clock on, and then the three of you, do you want to come here?
Yeah.
Would you? Okay, come here and then I can have you sign it right on the spot. That'd be great.
Okay, 4 o'clock at Town Hall?
Yeah.
You all can get here a little early and sign all the paperwork. You haven't.
That's, thank you, Will.
And then I, I did send you the GSB warrant. You don't need to approve that because that's approved by the school committee. But that, I did the calculation for Damascotta. If it's approved as F4 currently, it's a 2.6% increase, 55,600 roughly increase. And by the way, on the, well, I'll be asking you approve, to approve the, the secondary schools annual meeting here shortly. So.
Right.
That's all I had for town manager items.
Okay, thank you. And thank Max and both of you for the pre-application bid and the acceptance. And that's exciting. I tell you what, you do, continue to do a great job at finding new resources for the town. So appreciate all that hard work that you do behind the scenes. So. Okay, let's go ahead.
Question was, the contract for Church Street sidewalks supposed to be under official action?
Yeah, that's. No, wait, we're just, we're just ready. And the first item is the contract for the Church Street sidewalk, survey design and engineering. Matt sent out all the information to that, about that earlier this week, last week. And I hope you've all had a time to review that. So Matt, if you want to talk a little bit about it, and then we'll get into questions from the board?
Yeah, the responsive bid came from Gartley and Dorsky, located, their main office is in Camden, but they have an office in Damascotta. And their bid for this survey, design and engineering work was. And their bid for this survey design and engineering work was takes fifty. And that's much less than the contract we received for this. And that's that would be good because we can put that toward the project itself, or if there's some additional work, we want the engineer to do as we go through this process. But the recommendation of the Public Works Committee is to find that the the Endorski is the low low proposal and responsive to our RFP. And then I'm asking for an additional twenty percent contingent. See, plus in three eighty.
And I ask a question or Mark, did you have a question?
No.
You do not have
No, no, right now.
Okay, I my question is call me suspicious. But when I see a contractor come in so much lower than all the other contractors, I worry. And I want, is that why you put the twenty percent contingency fee in? I just, you know, when I look at this, the range, you know, from the low bid being twenty-eight thousand dollars to the high bid being seventy-six thousand dollars. And then for the bid alternate, you know, you know, one and two, there's just such a discrepancy in costs. I'm just curious or suspicious. I don't know.
Let me give you some reasons from, I think, good reasons for that. First of all, these other firms. Not only did they ask me what some of them asked me what we had available, and some of them didn't ask me, but they got online and they did some research and found out what the donation was. So it's, you know, if they asked me, I told them, you know, you know, it was announced at a at a selectman's meeting. It's public information. So you know, the 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 item was seventy-five thousand. The second reason, I think, in this, this shows costs that Gartley and Dorsky quoted their surveyor dusty stars located downtown. So they have their own surveyor and he's, you know, right in the neighborhood. So you don't have the subcontractor markup and you don't have the 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 travel time. And then the third re is and then we Andrew Hedrick this directly, you know, we said, hey, you know, others have given us four hundred plus hours of engineering time and you've provided made it two hundred and ninety hours. How do you explain that? And he and he said, we looked at it. We're very familiar with the town. We're very familiar with that work site. And that is is what it's going to cost. It's it's not some of these other add-on.
Okay.
On that other sheet that we didn't ask for. So he's just saying that's our honest price, you know, as far as what it's going to cost us to do what we feel is necessary.
Okay, well, like I said, I just
You know, and that's that, you know, we had the same question and and we were we were kind of stuck.
Yeah. Doing contracting for, you know, three years. I I just, it's like, wow, that just really jumped out at me. But, okay. If you
No, you know, that's, yeah.
Mark?
To add as well.
How did you arrive at the twenty percent? Was that their idea to carry the twenty percent?
That was that was our idea.
Mark, Mark, I'll I'll give you a heads up on on that when we met with Andrew on, I guess it was yesterday. We had a really good discussion and there were a couple of things that Bob had brought up on. I think you guys got a copy of the questionnaire and and had all the answers from Andrew. So we just felt if, as the Public Works Committee felt that there could be a couple of issues that might arise if we had to do some surveying on the opposite side of the road, if we had to move things over a little bit. We just wanted to kind of cover ourselves in case there was some easements or things that should arise if we did have to, if the road roadway was too far over to that that way to get a couple easements. So we just wanted to make sure we had a little bit of funds. We didn't have to dump right back to the board. You know, if we needed to move quickly, but we're going to try to hold the line at that twenty-eight thousand number the best we can. We just want a little bit of flexibility if an emergency should arise.
Okay, so that came from a recommendation from what committee?
The Public Works Committee that we reviewed it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments? All right, well, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion. We accept the Gartley and Dorsey bid.
I'll second.
You you want to put the twenty percent contingency in there as well?
Yes.
Right.
Well, I I assume that that would be in it. Sorry.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the Gartley and Dorsky bid at the the base bid twenty-eight thousand four hundred and six dollars plus a twenty percent contingency fee?
Correct.
If needed.
If needed, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that was seconded, I think.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. I hope they stick to it. The secondary schools annual town meeting warrant and Matt was just talking about that. And I guess at this point, I I would like to make a motion that we approve the date of Wednesday, May twelfth the time of seven fifteen at night for the start of these secondary school budget to act on articles one through fifteen of their warrant. So essentially setting the date and time for that meeting is October Wednesday, October twelfth at seven fifteen in the evening. Is that right, Matt?
Uh, Robin, the that doesn't require a board approval as meeting.
Doesn't. Okay, all right.
So what we're we're recommending is that it be seven forty-five for the secondary schools at the same location.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And, yeah, and I can explain why in a minute.
Okay. All right. So the secondary school would be at May twelfth at seven forty-five. Comments, Matt, you want to talk about this?
I just you want a second on it?
I'll second.
So, yeah, just an explanation there. You know, you, in the past, the board has had the the secondary school special town meeting, special annual town meeting as part of your regular meeting. And the the schedule just doesn't work, you know, for the reasons I alluded to earlier, unless you have another special board meeting next week to do that. And then I I I've attended the the budget meetings, the the town meetings for the schools in the past, and I saw where Newcastle has piggyback on the GSB meeting to have of their secondary schools meeting. And I thought, well, isn't that that's a good idea because you've got at the people's schools, they're already. So why not just pick be back on. So the way that we have to set up a specific time, but in reality, we would have the meeting at at seven forty-five or as soon as the GSB meeting is over, whichever is later.
Any other questions? Hey, all in favor of the motion? We're always down to the segments discussion items. And as always, I just go around the order in which I see you on my screen. So Josh, we'll start with you this evening.
I don't have much to say other than just keep safe and get vaccinated. If that's your choice, you want to get vaccinated. So and like I, like I said, last meeting, Little League is started and we'll see if I can make the fifth.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Thank you. Lou?
I just have a little warning on Sunday. My son Scott had to shoot a porcupine with rabies. That's so that was on Lesnar Road.
Oh, boy.
I don't know if it's reported in the paper or not. The game one didn't come out because nobody was bet. Scott had to bury deep the porcupine and then disinfected the area. That's all I
Everybody take precautions. Just the season, I guess, huh? All the animals are coming out from their winter hibernation and what have you. So take care. Mark?
I guess at one, and I was just two weeks ago, Matt was gonna check on how many time we weave the town charter on the bid amount of five thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, I've got that on my to-do list.
Okay, maybe we can have that for us next meeting?
May fifth?
Sure, sure.
You know, I I know you're busy because there's a bunch of other things bubbling up right now, but
Yeah, we wouldn't. We won't be able to act on a charter amendment for a while anyway, but I can get that for you.
That that would be good because I really do feel like we do that a lot. We need to get that straightened out a little bit and, okay, you know.
Okay. Okay, Daryl?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing much tonight. It's getting a little warmer and it's nice to see the bathrooms coming along back here. It's like, looks good. There's a lot of a lot of positive input from that. So that's gonna be gonna be great. So I have to say.
Actually, I'm lay bricks, man.
Yeah.
Really neat.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, the only thing I have is for the fifth, we will meet in on office because the YMCA if they have Space Force. So keep that in mind, make this, and it'll be a regular meeting time at five thirty. And I don't have joy, beautiful. Doug, you have something?
Yeah, I mean, this probably isn't the right time to be mentioning this as far as the format of the of the minutes, but I'm sure that Matt has explained to you that the waterfront improvement committee budget has been pushed to the limit and we're not going to be able to do much in terms of aesthetics. Basically, just get a functional wall in place. And part of the discussion last time was to see if we could possibly consider doing some sort of two-two-fold activity. One, a general information campaign to get more people involved town-wise. And secondly, possibly even a fundraising activity in knowing that we're not going to be able to do much of the decorative stuff without additional funds. And that brings me to wondering if you would approve and or promote having some sort of a kiosk, if you will, at many of the town functions like the Fourth of July, the Pumpkin Fest. That would hand out information, maybe solicit donations and get get the town more aware of what's going on.
Robin?
Yes, sir.
I I know the meeting's drawing to an end, so I'll make this very quick. But, you know, this is, I'm sharing some behind the scenes work that is not ready for the water for the Board of Selectmen. It's just kind of the work that staff does behind the scenes. But we at the staff end are not pleased with the solution that's been given to us to date. So I've communicated that to the engineering team and their two-thirds of whom are on vacation this week. We're going to be meeting with them next week. So I appreciate you giving that update, Doug, but, you know, we're not satisfied that we have to settle for a astral type wall. So
All right, I'm sorry. I
That's okay.
Appreciate as a political statement.
Not a problem. Okay, so you know, if I guess Matt will keep us informed as time goes on about
May I throw in a word?
Yes.
Doug, I appreciate Doug's comment. I just think you as selectmen should be aware that we need to in some way appropriately, as the staff figures this out, involve the larger community in what's happening there. When it's when we've got our our dominos lined up in a row, I see Matt shaking his head. The thing is, we need, it's the time has come when we need to broaden the conversation and come at this as a community when we have a clear idea of how how we can move forward.
Okay. All right. Okay, and you know, we'll work with that to see what we can do to come up with something. You know, in in the past, the Matt's fundraising efforts have been phenomenal. He raised, you know, he would raise about a million dollars to get this whole thing started. So we'll have to see what we can do. And again, we talked at our last Board of Selectmen meeting about the possibility of some of the federal funding, the COVID relief funding that's going to economic development. Maybe we could shave some of that off to use for this because it is kind of hard, you know, in line with economic development. So we'll keep working on it.
Matt just needs to find more money. It's that simple.
Hey, go back. Josh promoted a couple months ago about the first flush, do a
Yeah.
lottery for the first flush, you know, the golden flush to, you know, open the the restrooms and everybody pick it pitch in five bucks to see if they can be that that one person. So, you know, there might be something we can do. So anything else for the good of the order? But that I'll entertain an an motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? I look forward to seeing each of you in person.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
So thank you.
Yeah, good night, night, Austin.
Good night.